Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this committee of the whole to order.
Your worship, we have an agenda before us, and I have no changes.
No changes. Is there someone who wishes to move the agenda today? Thank you, Council Richard, seconded by Councilor Kingston. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item would be adoption of minutes of July 22, August 26, and September 23.
Thank you. Is there someone who wishes to thank you, Council Legiers or a seconder for those minutes? Thank you, Council Edget. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next would be conflict of interest. Déclaration des conflits d'intérêts.
I do not see any. I think we're good.
So we are now into new business. Presentation from KPMG LLP, our city auditor. And I believe that Mr. Doucette will be addressing this.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. So this is a routine exercise that we have to do every year. We have Marc Saint Pierre, the lead audit engagement partner from KPMG with us. And he'll walk us through the audit plan for the 2024 year. The interim will be starting soon, and then the rest of the audit will occur in early 2025. So I will pass it over to Marc, and we can go to the report. Thank you.
Terrific. Welcome, Marc. I just ask you to turn on your microphone. You just need to press a button in front of you. There you go.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's Mayor Arnold, city councils, members. My name is Marc Saint Pierre. I'm the partner at KPMG, and I'm the lead engagement partner, as Jacques mentioned, on the City of Moncton audit. And I'm very pleased to be here today to present our audit plan for the upcoming audit. And what I would like to do is to touch on a couple of the highlights, key areas of within the presentation materials. And if there are any questions, happy to answer any questions throughout the presentation or even at the end, if any should surface. Our audit is on the consolidated set of financial statements of the City of Moncton. We perform our audit in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. Management prepares those financial statements in accordance with public sector accounting standards. Our audits, our risk base, and we've identified a number of areas of risk that I'll walk through the presentation, hit some of the highlights on how we address those as part of the audit. First, what's new this year? What are some of the differences from prior years? There's a couple new accounting standards that, thank you, that the city will be required to analyze. One is around revenue recognition. There's a new accounting standards on revenue recognition. There's a new standard on purchase intangibles, and another new standard on public-private partnerships, which are all effective for this fiscal year end. There are new, from time to time, we do see new auditing standards, and we do have a new auditing standard which will have an impact on us in executing your audit. It's around group instructions. So as I mentioned, we do deliver an audit of a consolidated set of financials. And so the rules around how we perform those audits are prescribed, and those prescriptions have been modified or enhanced, and therefore required to be applied on this year's fiscal year-end audit. The other component of our audit strategy involves materiality, and I'll talk to you a bit about materiality. And what materiality is for the non-accountants or auditors in the world is what would be reasonable to bear to influence a user of your financial statement? So very subjective in nature. There's some qualitative, quantitative aspects to that calculation, which I'll walk you through. We use that largely to drive the nature, extent, and timing of our work that we do, risk assessment procedures that we do. And we reassess this throughout the audit period. We gather the evidence, and we evaluate those if there are any misstatements. And that's a key figure that we use in determining being able to issue our audit opinion. Just how do we calculate that? And it's very consistent with prior years. We look to where users focus in on a set of financials. As you can imagine, the subjectivity around that, the judgment. So we have to have that vision of identifying the users. We tend to focus on organizations like yourselves around revenues and expenditures. And so we look for that figure. And as we have in prior years, we've used total estimated, projected estimated revenues. And we use a percentage of that component to derive a materiality of 3.9 million this year versus a 3.5 million in prior years. And what that is, is largely the increase, the expected increase in revenues, which is driving that number. More importantly, we use a concept called audit misstatement posting thresholds, which is 5% of that number, 195,000. So should we identify any differences in our audit procedures for that amount? We would report it to management. Management would either correct it or not. In either case, we will report it to you as part of our audit findings. So you're fully aware of those adjustments or unrecorded adjustments. The other aspect of our audits is we do bring in other people to the audits. Management utilizes specialists in determining the measurement of your employee future benefits. We use our KPMG actuarial specialists to review their work, looking at assumptions, the model that's been used. And we also, because of the nature of the employee benefits, there's an investment component to it. So we do look at the controls at the service organization to ensure those controls are appropriate. So we do, we bring in our KPMG IT specialist to review that report. As I mentioned, our audits are risk-based, so we've identified a number of areas of risk. I'll speak to a couple of them. Most of them are, we've assessed as base risk. There's a couple that I will highlight, just particularly around their requirements of the auditing standards. One of them is the risk of management override. So we're required by the standards, just because of management's unique position, to perpetrate a fraud, we're required to think about that in our audits and think about where would that opportunity be should management wish to perpetrate a fraud? And again, I iterate that this is presumed in every audit that we do. And how do we look at it? We look at where management can override systems of controls, for example, journal entries. So we'll do some work around journal entries. We'll look at estimates, areas of judgment, those types of things. And if there's any unusual business transactions, we'll take a look at those as well, because often those require judgment. So those are the areas of focus and how we deal with those. The other area, as I mentioned, is the measurement of the employee future benefits. There's a lot of assumptions, complex calculations, hence why management engages an actuarial specialist. And we engage our actuarial specialists as well to take a look at those assumptions. We also do a number of procedures around the inputs. The data is being used by the actuary specialist to derive the number. So we spend some time on that. So I just wanted to highlight that just because it's a significant number. It's complex in estimates, and we bring in the right resources to be able to mitigate those risks and to execute those procedures. The other thing I'll highlight is just the timing of the audits. We are largely ongoing. We execute our planning, October, November, risk assessments, our presentation here today. We do some interim work in November, and year-end work is expected to be done in February with the goal of completing in end of April, May timeframe, which is consistent with prior years. The remaining documents in our presentation are some information for your, some thought leadership, further details on some of the accounting pronouncements, the auditing pronouncements, some insights for those charged with governance, should you want to take a look deeper into some of the topics. Certainly cybersecurity, ESG is certainly a hot topic, and there's some links to some key documents there. And also highlights some of our technologies that we bring to bear on the audit. So I just, we've left those in there. I'm not going to go through any detail, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have on our presentation here today.
Thank you very much, Marc. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Council Legier.
Yeah, thank you. Just one question. In the overview you gave, page 12 has required inquiries of city council. So can you just touch on some of the things that we have in place? And are there, would you highlight things that we should have in place that perhaps we don't? And maybe just elaborate on that?
Yeah. So great questions. What I thought on those required inquiries, these are inquiries that help us plan and execute the audit. I didn't bring it up today. What I suggested to Jacques would be that I would connect with the mayor to have those discussions. But I'd love to get your input, because I think the idea there is that we want to understand what you're getting, what risks, those fraud risks that you guys are getting. Are you concerned about any areas of risk within the organization? So it's simply, this is a questionnaire really to help us plan and execute the audit. If there are any frauds that you're aware of that may create some concerns that we should address in our audit. So it's really just a planning. It's not to be able to present you with all the fraud risk mitigations that you have within the organization. I leave management to do that. But it's really for allowing us, and we do inquire with management. We identify those because it is part of our planning process. And those charged with governance, we really want to understand if you have any areas of risk. We work for you folks if there's any areas that you would like us to focus in on. And so that's, those questions are around what are the broad risk procedures that you are exposed to as an organization? Have there been any? Are there any significant unusual transactions and those types of things?
And what about giving advice related to, for example, cybersecurity? We've made some changes, but I wouldn't be in a position to validate whether we've gone far enough. It's just things like that that would help, I guess, solidify to residents that, you know, as much as we can, things are in place. And as well, maybe, you know, we think of fraud, we think of, and over the years, cash transactions and things like that that have been streamlined. But what are some of the other things that perhaps we should be looking at? And is it prudent, for example, to do every three or four years or whatever the number is, an evaluation of all of our assets? Because we have different operations in different places and a lot of moving parts.
Yeah. Excellent questions. And what we can do is we'll focus in on those areas. We do make inquiries around cybersecurity, but I'll spend a little bit of time and getting our, perhaps our gurus to take a look at that and be able to assess. And yes, it is a very hot topic, and it would be prudent on any organizations to ensure that you're continuously evaluating all those controls that you've implemented on a regular basis. Three years might be a little long, but I think it's an ongoing evaluation that should be done just because of the nature. It's not a day go by that we're not hearing something yet either in the news or organizations being perpetrated by cybersecurity. So we can take a look at that. We do a number of inquiries around it, in particular, asking whether there's been any events that would, focusing on financial reporting, right? There's all kinds of reputational risk, et cetera, around cybersecurity. But our focus is around financial reporting. Has there been an impact on that? And so we do, we do do inquiries, we do assessments as to whether there have been any. But keeping in mind, thank you for that question and inquiry, because I've made some notes, and we'll take a little bit deeper dive around those areas.
Because we always think of, you know, there have been incidents where some cities were targeted and lessons learned and, I guess, best practices so that we can at least, you're never totally protected, but at least if you've given it some thought, you've perhaps put some things in place. So that would be good. Thank you. Merci.
Thank you, Council Bourgeois.
Merci beaucoup, Madame Le Maire. Thank you for your presentation. Just one question, but it might lead to a couple of sub-questions. But have you ever performed value-for-money audits for the city?
I don't believe we have.
Because I know KPMG does, but I'm not so know.
No.
What, and I'm thinking of two extremes here, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if you could or could not help us. But one is, I had a discussion with the director about having one employee doing a lot of work and having a budget to hire contracts, specialized services. Would it be better to hire a second person to do, you know, or that kind of stuff? So using the same money by hiring a person rather than consultants? That's, to me, that's a low end of the scale. High end of the scale would be sooner or later, we'll have to have a discussion on whether or not we add a sixth fire station. It might be 10 years down the road, might be 20 years down the road. Depends probably on how fast Visions land, land north of the University of Moncton develops. But there's probably not a fire team that would be able to respond within the four or five-minute delay if it wasn't, if there wasn't. So that's, you know, multimillion-dollar, long-term projects, tiny little hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year project. Would those be the kind of value-for-money audits that you could be doing for the city?
Yeah, great question, Council Bourgeois. We, as you were speaking, I remember some training I did about five years ago in our Ontario office, where we were going to, we were doing assessments at municipalities across Ontario around those types of things. Those are, you know, what is the cost-benefit analysis? And actually calculating those benefits in a nice formalized report. We don't do that as part of our audit. Our audit is focused on, you know, whether the statements are materially misstated. But we certainly do that. We have a number of specialists within our organization that focuses on those areas. And as I said, it was big enough that I did two days of training in Hamilton on the work that they're doing around this space. So I also, as you were speaking, I was thinking lean, lean in processes. Oftentimes, we see lean being done in manufacturing and the, you know, the, in the office procurement, things like that. Organizations aren't focusing on those types of things. You know, the decision, the cost-benefit of adding an individual or outsourcing. We have done a number of those engagements around lean, lean in the processes that would help management make some of those decisions. So absolutely, we would have the resources available to do those types of things. We always, as well being your external auditor, we do think about independence and auditor independence. We would have to go through the evaluation and tends not to be an issue. We just don't ever want to be in a positioning of auditing ourselves, for example. So we would have to put up the walls and make sure that there's some independence thought around anything that we would do. So great question.
Thank you very much. I hope city manager takes note of this. Thank you very much. Merci, Madame Le Maire.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions at this time. Thank you very much, Marc. Look forward to this process going forward.
Thank you.
The next item is a revised strategic plan, and I believe that our CAO is going to take the lead on this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. So we're going to be providing a bit of an update on the strategic plan. So as you recall, over the last number of months, we've had a number of working sessions with strategic consultants on finalizing the update to the strategic plan. And the strategic plan update, really, it's at a high level, including your pillars, vision and mission and goals for those pillars. It's, I think it's important to also keep in mind that once that the high-level strategic plan has been adopted, then, you know, administration will take those pillars and priorities and establish work plans as well as report cards to be able to report back, not only to council but to the community on our progress. So at this point, I think that we do have a presentation, and I'd ask maybe Nick Rocho to walk through the presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Serge. Bonjour tout le monde. Hi, everyone. So basically, what we have here prepared is just the new proposed pillars for the strategic plan. So everybody will recall, we used to have this document as our strategic plan. It's actually still our current council-approved strategic plan. But in 2023, administration went through a process where we, we kind of did a bit of a jurisdictional scan and looked at how other municipalities were approaching their strategic plans. And we wanted to develop, to look at best practices. And this is kind of where we've landed with that process. The previous strategic plan that we had here was more of a work plan for administration. It had over 100 projects in here. And, you know, each one essentially being a priority of council. So it was very, very difficult sometimes for administration to balance those priorities and develop work plans when you have so many competing priorities. So this plan takes council back to that higher-level governance level to say, okay, what are really the high-level vision, mission, and goals that the city needs to be focused on? And then below that, as Serge mentioned, once we have these in place, then administration can develop work plans, we can develop measurable actions, and we can develop the reporting process to come back to council each year to let you know how we're doing in achieving those goals. So the pillars really have not changed all that much. As an example, here we have the environment pillar. So the vision is just below that. So it's, our vision is that Moncton is a green community. And then below that is the mission statement, which is to protect and enhance the environment. The line below that, then, you have those three kind of high-level goals. What are we looking to achieve under this pillar? So one would be to reduce net greenhouse gas emissions. Council's already approved a target on that, which is to achieve net zero by 2050. The next one, adapt to climate change. And then the final one is to manage and enhance natural assets. And then below each of those, we have just some language, generally speaking, of how administration would go about achieving those goals. So those aren't, those aren't the specific measurable actions yet. That's just kind of examples of the type of work that we'd be doing to achieve each of those. And we also have the French version of each of those pillars also. So moving on, the next pillar was safety and security. So that one, in our previous strategic plan, it was actually called social. That was the social pillar. So we've simply renamed that to safety and security. And obviously, there's been some language changes in there also. So we're looking at delivering effective protective services, support and advocate for affordable housing, and creating a safe environment for all. Under economy, so our vision is that we have a thriving, dynamic community. And our mission would be to propel sustainable development and strategic investment. And then we have, we have three goals below that. It's a bit hard to see in the purple up on the screen, but it's to attract and retain business and investment, support sustainable development and population growth, and make strategic investments in our infrastructure. Francais, c'est le même chose. Governance, again, that pillar has kept the same title. Our vision is to be an engaged community, and our mission is to lead by encouraging innovation, participation, transparency, and accountability in our decision-making. So our goals here would be to be a well-managed and responsible organization, to increase and diversify stakeholder collaboration and resident engagement, and also to invest in employees and innovation. And the last one, the pillar has been renamed from simply culture to culture and recreation. Our vision is to be a vibrant and inclusive community, and our mission is to enrich the lives of residents and visitors. And we have three goals here. Support and embrace culture, heritage, and bilingualism. Deliver exciting and engaging programs and events, and to enhance and invest in our public spaces. Et c'est en français. So as Serge mentioned, we'd like to get these pillars finalized, the language in these today. If there are any language modifications that council wants to make, that's, this would be the opportunity to have those discussions. And hopefully, we can have some consensus on what those changes are. And then, as Serge mentioned, the next steps would be to come back to council in the new year with measurable actions and a reporting process. And then to eventually have alignment with the strategic plan with the 2026 budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Council Butler and Council Leblanc, I have you up first. Do you wish to move and second? Okay. Council Leblanc, would you move for second? Okay. Is there someone who wishes to second? Thank you, Council Richard. Can we go to that screen, please? There. If you don't mind moving and seconding, that would be appreciated. You have to do that on your screen. Terrific. Thank you. All right. Councilor Butler, go ahead. Oh. Okay. Why? I don't know. You were first on my screen here, according to.
All right. I'll go.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Nick. So the last time we spoke about our plan, one of the things that I was interested in in the environment, a green community. And I had wanted to, at that time, to get something in the plan regards to the air quality that people, quality of life. And I thought that there was something going to be in that, but I don't see anything that covers that in that, unless I'm missing it. Reduce the net greenhouse gas emission to provide resources to help Monctonians or Moncton residents make informed, effective lifestyle decisions. That doesn't cover it. Adapted to climate change. I can't see anything in there in that. And mostly, I'm talking about Transactwa, and that's why we had a motion that was unanimously passed to try to help the residents of North End to get rid of that stink up there. And so it's hard to get rid of something when our planning going forward has nothing in it to, even for us as a council or for you as senior staff to work with. So you got any ideas what we should else should be putting in there?
Well, I mean, just because something's not in here, it doesn't mean that staff are not working on it, especially where we have council-adopted motions to move certain projects forward. So that work is still in progress, even if we don't see it here. We don't have every single project here that administration's working on.
Will we not cover air quality?
Well, and that's, so that's my next comment. If council does want to add that, I think it would probably best fit, you know, we could potentially tweak the language under manage and enhance natural assets. Perhaps we could, we could address air quality under that item.
Well, you know, myself personally, and that's just not for me, but, you know, air and noise. I mean, you know, we have another place, Aim, on Tomb Street, that's causing a lot of noise. I mean, you know, if we're going to have a plan going forward, we have to specifically mention the issues that the residents of the City of Moncton are having. In the North End, it's the smell. And in the East End of, northeast end, it's the noise. So I would think that if we're going to have a plan, especially underneath environmentally, a friendly community, that we would put these things in there that if somebody comes and looks at our site and says, okay, they're looking after air quality, which is important to the children, you know, going to school, and then also with the, with the noise. and then also with the, with the noise. So you know, it's easy for us to sit here and say, well, we're working on that, we're working on that. But again, you know, it's nice to have it down that it's, I, I don't know. I'll leave it up to the rest of council what they think. But I would think that, you know, that I thought last time when we spoke about this, that there would be something in here about the air quality, and it never got in, and I still don't see it. So I would like to have it this time for sure. But again, whatever council wants to go out with. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Councilleur LeBlanc.
Oui, je sais pas où la traduction a été faite, mais.
I don't know where this was translated, but it, you can't, it doesn't read well in French.
Other people have read it also in the, it's not just me. Okay. Non, non, merci beaucoup.
Merci pour ça.
Conseiller Bourgeois. Sorry, I did it again. Sorry, just in second, s'il vous plaît.
Just a second, I did it again, thank you. Here you go, go ahead. Thank you, thank you, your worship, thank you, Nick. Two comments. First of all, the word democracy does not appear here. I know that under governance, we want to encourage innovation, participation. We talk about, well, yeah, encouraging innovation, participant transparency and accountability, which are components of democracy. But we are a democratic institution. This is what distinguishes us from a business. We are a corporation that belongs to the citizens. And it's great that we want to encourage innovation, participation and so on. But I think we have a responsibility of encouraging democracy as well. So I, if I, if I can propose something, I would add democracy in this mission, in this statement. I don't know if we need to vote on it, if we need to put forth a motion, I'm not sure. But, and my other question is, after this, I don't have a problem with these principles of these, the vision, the mission and so on. But after three years, three and a half years, is this council going to finally address the priorities? We're covering all the bases here. Well, except a couple of examples where it's not specific enough. But public safety for me is always a priority because it's the only service that is mandatory under the local government's act. Municipalities have to offer police services. But it's also the main issue in our community currently. And for now, and probably for at least two or three years to go. We're the third worst city in Canada in terms of the crime rate. So if that's not a priority, I'd like to know what it is. But when are we going to look at the priorities? Because it would be nice to have it before the budget, but eventually, so we could re-sign resources based on these priorities. Mr. CAO?
Thank you for your question, Councilleur Bourgeois. Absolutely. In the development of the work plans, that's the intention, to integrate the, to have a discussion with these priorities within the, the framework of the city's priorities. So yes, absolutely, the next step, it was our intention to have this discussion. Thank you. So I'll come back to my first point. Do I move an amendment to this plan to add the word democracy? I don't know what the rest of council thinks of this.
So maybe we'll go through the questions and then come back to that. Go ahead, Councillor Terrio.
Merci, Madame Lammer. I have.
Thank you, your worship.
In the wording, could we add something with regards to controlling the sources of air and noise pollution, development of control strategy? But some sort of wording.
Sure. Once we have all the, I'm not sure if anybody else has any, any questions to add. Perhaps I can kind of think about the wording on that one for a second while we're going, going through the others and we can propose something.
So we'll come back. Okay, merci.
Thank you, Councilleur Richard.
Merci, Madame Lammer. Just, just for clarification, Nick, the recommendation is just on the pillars, vision, mission, goals for each pillar. So there, there's way more to this than, than what we're seeing here today. So that, I mean, I'm hoping that the, the two situations that were mentioned are going to come up in this plan somewheres, in a, in a line item type thing, or, or is.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is step one, would be to have council approval for these, for these pillars, vision, mission, the goals. Once this is approved, then administration will, will, will go back and we'll look at each of those goals. And we're going to develop measurable actions that we can come back and report back to council on. And we'll tell you how we're going to report back to council each year on whether or not we're achieving those goals.
Right.
Beyond that, administration also has a work plan. Each, each department has their own work plans to tackle all of the other issues along with these that, that we're addressing, whether they're council priorities, whether they're things that come up in the community, whether they're just regular day-to-day things, right? That's all the work that has to be done. This document helps us to prioritize, especially when it comes to the budget process, to figure out which, which budgetary items should take priority over others.
Yeah, and, and maybe I asked the question wrong, but the recommendation for today is just to accept what we see here on our screens. And I'm not against adding to what we see here. I'm just, I'd like confirmation or just something that says that these two items are actually going to be inside that, that document somewhere, right?
Well, they, they, they will be if, if council decides to, to add them here. But I guess what I'm saying is even if they're not in this document, they're still going to be worked on, they're still.
Still be there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, non merci.
Thank you, Councillor Kingston.
Thank you, Madame Mares. Thank you, Nick. It's just more of a comment and to piggyback on our fellow councillors here. The, I guess the big one on the safety and security side, the first line, and it will be expanded upon. Selon question du aujourd'hui, deliver effective protective services, review and adjust services to respond to community needs. That is a very powerful one liner. I know it's a lofty goal and the measurables are coming. But that to me, right off the page includes our Kodiak RCMP expansion, community police officer empowerment. So those are big ones there. That one obviously is going to get the attention of, of our citizens on the pillars. So I just wanted to make a comment on reviewing adjusting services to respond to all our needs in the community is a big one. It's a very powerful statement, and I know the measurables are coming, and I hope to see an expansion of exactly what that means. Thank you, merci, Nick. Thank you, Madame Mares.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Nick.
So at this time, we have on the environment pillar, something around air and noise quality and the addition of the word democracy in the governance pillar. Thoughts on how those would be incorporated?
On the, on the governance question, is there a word that you would take out to replace, Councilleur Bourgeois, to, or just add democracy to that, that list, okay?
I, I was thinking actually, because it is, in my personal opinion, it's so big, it's bigger than the others. I'd put an engaged and democratic community at the very top possibly, or is that the sense of what you have? Sorry, can you turn on your microphone? Okay. Well, perhaps be more open to it, openness to it. I, I honestly feel like there might have been other discussions that we had that aren't here right now too, which is a little worrisome, but. An engaged and democratic community. Yes, I'm seeing nods, okay. And then on the environment pillar, probably in the third column there, I'm thinking, under manage and enhance, is it natural assets?
Correct, so we could could say protect and manage. Tell you what, if, if, if council is okay with it, if, if everybody would like that language added, we, we have to bring this back to be ratified at the next public meeting. I can, I can be sure, I'll speak to Elaine about this, and I can be sure to add in a separate bullet under, under manage and enhance natural assets. We'll add a fourth bullet to that section that will address air quality, noise, noise pollution.
Terrific.
Is that okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone who has a question that has not asked at this time? I will go back to you, Councilleur Bourgeois, go ahead.
I just wanted to suggest that we amend the first dot, reducing greenhouse gases and other sources of pollution. And then we could add a fourth bullet in relation to sound pollution and air pollution. It's just a suggestion, thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded with the understanding that those two things will be accomplished before this comes back to us at a public setting to totally ratify. Are we ready to vote? Yes? Okay. Excellent, the, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. And Nick, we look forward to seeing those reflected. Thank you.
Your worship, the next item is a presentation of the 2025 budget, and that will be done by our CFO, Jacques Doucet.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship and council. I guess this would be my first budgetary exercise coming up in the next few days. We'll be going through here, I, I think our CFO Jacques will be going through a very high level preamble to the next few days. I think it's, it's important to also recognize that the guidance provided in August to, to administration is key to give us those guardrails as we prepare this draft budget. Though again, I want folks to keep in mind that it is a draft budget at this point, that the, that the, the actions or the, what's being presented is in line with the guidance that was provided back in August. As well, also taking into consideration, again, as we all know, inflation, the inflationary pressures on, on the city and on every organization across this country, as well as the, I guess, pressures and continued need for the city to invest in, in key strategic areas. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our team at Finance and thank every, the entire management team. They've spent countless, if not hundreds of hours in preparing the budget that we'll be going over in the next few days, and really look forward to the conversation. So again, thank you Jacques, to you and your team, as well as the rest of the management of the city. Merci.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. So as our CAO has mentioned, so this will really be just a general overview, is to introduce this topic to council, and it's also to highlight to the public that budget deliberations will occur in tomorrow, on Wednesday, and will be approved with a special public meeting on Thursday. For this year, the positive, one really good thing is that we will be, the citizens, the public will be able to stream the budget deliberations on YouTube, or will be able to see them at their own convenience when they want to watch it. So for this year, this presentation, we're just going to go over the three funds that we administer. So that'll be part of budget deliberations tomorrow. Our key objectives for this year, and it aligns with what was discussed at the Committee of the Hall meeting, is in preparation of the three budgets, it's really to incorporate the strategic objectives that we hear from council, that we discuss during every meeting that we have with council. Another key consideration this year is the affordability of the taxpayers and ratepayers. As you can see in the medias right now, there's many different mechanisms being applied by the different levels of government. Because affordability of the citizens or so on across Canada, it's the same. We're seeing some mechanisms by the feds, the province, and we have those in our budgets as well. So it's a consideration. And also, we try to prioritize everything in a municipal budget, since we need to be balanced, is all based on prioritization. The 2020-25 corporate budget overview, again, we're going to discuss tomorrow in our, in the draft budget. General operating budget that is now at $223.8 million, a utility budget at $46.2 million, and a capital budget for the general fund with gross spends of $62.6 million for 2025, which we, where we would borrow $20.9 million. And for the utility fund, $10.2 million, which we, and we would borrow $6 million. In the, in the three budgets, we have strategic investments in public safety. So we'll discuss these tomorrow for police and fire. We, a lot of investments in Kodiak transport and ability transit, some investments in equipment for the operational departments who do great work in our city. You'll see various additions of, of personnel in different service areas, and a focus on environmental programs. Also, very key, we see this in the media as well often. So there's going to be some, we'll discuss our investments in asset management and also on our growth items. In our utility fund, we have some capital investments for blue green algae. We have some investments in our five-year capital budget for recreational infrastructure, heritage, technology as well, and many different other areas. Our general fund for 2025, here are the things that we will be discussing. Again, we're seeing continued assessment growth. I'll go into that a little bit later on the slides. We did, we do consider the affordability of taxpayers. This was brought to council at the Committee of the Hall meeting in August, and council took a position. So that is what we've applied. We're always, when we prepare budgets, we want to make sure that we can meet the approved service levels with our existing funds. So that's a consideration. We have addressed inflationary pressures. One that comes to mind right now, we've adjusted, adjusted patching by 300,000 just to keep up with the costs. And again, we want to invest in our strategic objectives. So in terms of assessment growth, what we will be discussing tomorrow, so our city of Moncton assessment growth has been 9.65%. That is very positive. We, we always have to remember as well when we're comparing assessment growths, if you're looking at comparators across the different municipalities in New Brunswick, one thing that's really important to highlight is Moncton, we have the biggest assessment base already, right? So for us to get 9% assessment growth, it's a lot more newest, it's a lot more assessment than it is for a municipality of a smaller size. The 9.65% for this year was based on new construction, which resulted in 2.89% and reassessment at 6.76%. So the difference between those two is reassessment is really a change in market value of your property, of your property. Versus new construction, it's actually the new builds that we're seeing across our city. Another thing with, with assessment, and this is something that really surprised, so I, surprised us and I felt it was important, is that even this year, 51% of the properties in our city have increased assessment by 10% or more. And that's not for tax purposes, that's the actual valuation of your, of the properties. Why that's important? That means that when we talk about despite protection mechanism, and we have 85% of our properties that are currently being protected, by having 51 of the, 1% of the properties, real assessment increasing more than 10%, that means that our, the problem is continuing, right? The gap of your actual assessment versus the assessment used for tax, for tax purposes, it's actually growing. So that gap, we're not seeing a end to that program where 85% of our residents will see a 10% assessment increases year over year for tax purposes. Not necessarily what they will pay, but the assessment used to calculate for tax purposes. The residential impact, very important considerations when we prepare budget. So again, we have probably 85% of our residential properties in our city that are currently under the spike protection mechanism. that are currently under the spike protection mechanism. Why is that important? That means that if we would keep our property tax rate at the same level, they will see a 10% property tax increase year over year. Again, that spike protection mechanism does not apply to new properties. Those are normally assessed at a very high, at the market value of when it's sold. Another thing we wanted to highlight in this presentation is the LSD rate in the budget is 34% lower than the city rate. This is something that we see across the province of new amalgamated areas where there was a significant gap to that. And again, based on the residential things, we're always looking at the affordability pressures as well. In terms of a breakdown of budget, I won't spend too much time on this slide, but the biggest component of our budget is wages and salaries. We are a service-oriented organization at 32.9%. The other one that I would like to mention as well is the CRPA. The CRPA, based on the budget we have this year, is 18.7%. So that is growing over past years. And then we have the different buckets after that as well. In terms of the utility operating budget, a little bit more easy to prepare on this one. Again, the goal of the utility budget is to try and have stable rate increases that is very manageable by the users. We'll get into more details when we deliberate the budget tomorrow. It's always important there, we want to maintain the service levels. One thing that we've included in the budget is a contribution to capital from operating to reduce future debt, and we also use a rate stabilization strategy in anticipation of major future capital projects. The breakdown of the utility budget is a little bit different than our general fund budget. It's a more infrastructure-heavy budget, so that's why you can see that one of the biggest line items is actually the fiscal services, the debt, the 32% sanitary sewer, that would be the trans aqua charges. And then after that, we have the different types of, let's call it, parts of the utility budget. In terms of the general capital budget, so the five-year gross spend here is $315 million, so that's what we will be going through tomorrow. The average five-year net debt is $19 million as the budget is prepared. Our asset management recapitalization, so that is the portion that we invest in our existing assets, which is very important for municipalities and every level of government. Our target is 75%. As we will discuss tomorrow for 2025, it's a little bit less than that, but we'll go into more details. And again, here as well, for the capital, prioritization is always based on criteria. One of the things for the capital budget that's a little bit different than the operating budget though, is sometimes projects will be canceled, and those, of course, would be communicated with council. But normally, because we prepare a five-year plan, it's not necessarily that projects do get canceled, it's just their move to a following year if they do not fit in the affordability threshold that's used when preparing our budgets. On the utility fund, our five-year gross spend is $85.7 million. The average five-year net debt's at 17. For the utility fund, we also have a recapitalization target of 75%. So overall, and this is what we will be discussing tomorrow, so the city continues to grow, but as every municipality would have across the world, there are still challenges, there's pressures, and that's why we will have a two-day, a full, two-day, we have two days planned for full deliberations. One of the things in both budgets is really to try and look at the affordability of ratepayers and taxpayers, so that is included in our budget. We also believe that there are key investments in strategic areas that are included in this budget. And of course, because with municipalities, we have to prepare balanced budgets, a balanced fiscal approach is key to the future. And I want to highlight to the public that budget deliberations will occur on November 26 and November 27. They will start tomorrow at 10 o'clock Atlantic time, and they are available on our YouTube channel. So I will open it up now for questions or comments. I'm looking forward to spending three days with council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacques. Councilor Bourgeois.
Thank you, your worship. My first question is as follows. So we're not going to address the details today, so general issues, right? Okay. I have five questions. First question. I'd like to put it out this way. Let's say your home value increased by $10,000 year over year, which means, let's say, $140 more in municipal taxes. This means, and correct me if I'm wrong, that someone over the past year would have paid $140 because it's halfway between the $1.43, $1.36 that we're proposing. So let's say a dollar forty, and that's a discussion we have with citizens every year. People complain that taxes are going up. So last year it was $140 because the home value, the assessed home value increased by $10,000. So the investment of this $140 returns 714%, $10,000 in increased value. So you pay $140 more in municipal taxes, but if you sold your house tomorrow, you would get $10,000 more. So that's a good return on investment, in a way, if you look at things that way. It's like about 700% return. Give him one second. $140 times 714, $10,000. Thank you, Councilor Bourgeois. So that's one way of presenting things or looking at things, but one should not forget that property taxes, because it's not necessarily something that you invest in your assets to increase your asset value. Taxes are related to services provided to citizens based on mechanisms, and the mechanisms used to calculate the overall amount is based on home assessments. So if you want to look at it that way, yeah, sure, you can say you're paying more municipal taxes or property taxes, but the real value of your home has increased by $10,000, but you're paying $140 more taxes. But the assessed value of your home could also go down, and taxes would not go down. So we have to be careful when we use that way of looking at things. Yes, I agree. So I agree with you in part, but on the other hand, there's a whole kind of monies that we invest in economic development to attract businesses, to attract people, that increases the value of everything. And this has been allowing us for the past four years to reduce tax rates for citizens. So you have to take into account the larger picture. But I agree with you. There are people coming in, there's immigrants, new arrivals who want to buy real estate, so it has a positive impact, but it also has negative impacts, obviously. But it results in real estate values to go up, so it's a bit more complex than that. But that's what I tell people. I say, okay, I agree, your municipal taxes are going to go up by $140, but your home value went up by $10,000. Service New Brunswick is always a bit more conservative in terms of home assessments to err on the side of caution. Usually, market values are a bit higher than municipal assessments. So that was my first question. My second question now, in relation to immigration and the decision by the federal government to decrease immigration levels in the future in comparison to what we've been experiencing over the past few years. But there's also the New Brunswick government that announced recently that they would cap immigration levels, or rentals, rather, starting in February. So you don't have to provide me with an answer today, but are you having discussions with promoters and developers? What kind of an impact could that have on our budget or revenues in the next few years? Yeah, it's, thank you for your question. It's something that we are very aware of, and it's going to have an impact on real estate developments on the economy of our city. So there's ups and downs, but it's a bit too soon to determine what the real impact will be because it can change drastically, but for sure, it's hard to predict, but it will have an impact. So we cannot control immigration, but there's a cap now. Thank you very much, and thanks for keeping an eye out on that.
When we received the budget from the CRPA for police services, including 17 extra members, I had asked if we could do a quick and dirty survey on Peace River or Surrey, or instead of hiring other RCMP members to hire social workers or psychologists, because many of the problems, the issues, the many of the crimes are due to social problems. So police officers aren't the ones who are going to solve those problems. It's more people who are lacking currently, provincially, I know that. But have you been able to look at a combination of police officers, police officers, social workers, psychologists, and so on in what's being done in Peace River and Surrey? Thank you, councillor. No, personally no, but tomorrow Charles Savoy and Ben will be here, and they'll be able to answer that question. Yeah, but they're going to answer for the RCMP. But, okay, well, never mind, I'll do my own research then. My fourth question. So on the social inclusion plan, last year we had put $100,000. It was an emergency fund. We didn't know exactly what the plan was going to, how it was going to be implemented, what it was going to give. But we have a plan now, we've started seeing it. The plan's only been, the committee has only been around for six months, but next year, the plan is going to be ongoing, and I didn't see anything in the budget. Perhaps I'm wrong, but have we included an amount for social inclusion, or did I miss it? Well, in terms of social inclusion, there is a page, I don't have the page number exactly, but there's a page on social considerations. It's within the first 40 pages, there's a whole section that includes what's in the budget. I don't have all of the details, but if you ask the question tomorrow, I'll have the detail, the page numbers in front of me. Okay, I don't think, do I have any other questions? Oh, yes, yes. Last question, page 22. It says, the Corporate Asset Management Plan in 2019, that was five years ago, it had identified $231.5 million as an infrastructure deficit. Five years later, now where are we? Because there's growth, that deficit, is it going up, or have we reduced it after five years? I'd like to reread that, if I may, but tomorrow I'll have the page in front of me. But that $231 million, that's where we are at today. So perhaps it's, the description perhaps is not properly described, perhaps that's my problem. Greg is the expert. I don't have all of the figures here, but one of the things that I am aware of in terms of asset management is that, and this is something we'll never get rid of, because we'll always have a deficit. As soon as you build something, you have a deficit the next day, but we're in good shape. And one thing that had an impact was inflation, because the replacement cost of our infrastructure went up. Not necessarily the condition of the infrastructure, but the cost, the replacement cost, so that has an impact. And of course, we have assets that we could invest more in. I think that's a reality of all the municipalities and all governments throughout the world, though maybe not in Dubai, but most governments do have assets that we need to invest in. But we can look at that question, we can address it more specifically tomorrow. Yeah, because it's, the way it's written here is that in 2019, we had identified $231 million, but if it's the same amount today, but we continued spending, but we have more infrastructure. I would just like an update on that, if you may. Thank you, thank you, your worship.
Jacques, thanks for the presentation. I went through the budget Friday, Saturday, and with all the rain yesterday, I actually had free time to do it again yesterday. So just a couple of questions for you. Somewhere normally, your group prepares the nonprofits and who the city is funding for nonprofits, as well as committees within City Hall, as well as, I don't know, community groups, things along that line. Did I miss that in the binder pages? And I know you don't have your binder here today, but maybe just some sort of outline, because I'm still looking for that information on what, because grants is a huge portion of our budget, as you know, and I'm just looking for some backing to have in the budget so that people can see exactly what everybody is getting, as well as, I'm assuming they come forward with business plans, a list of their board members, a list of staffing. Could you answer that question for me?
Yes, thank you, your worship, to councillor Crossman. So as approved by council, this would be the first year where our grants process is changing. So the way it works, and this is something that was discussed, the grant policy was approved by council or so on. We have two councillors on the Grants Committee. It would be councillor Kingston and also councillor Steve are currently on the Grants Committee. I believe we have three members from the public, plus a few from staff as well on that committee. So for the new process, the way it's laid out, so there's been inflation attached to our grants in general. And then after that, on December 16th, or I believe it's December 16th of this year, the Grants Committee, the new Grants Committee that was formed as per the new policy, will come to council with that information. Any adjustments at that time would be made. We could make adjustments on that time, either using a redirection of funds. And if there's not enough funds at that time, that's where we can approve either, council can approve either overspends, or they could approve using a council contingency to top up a grant or something. So tomorrow, the plan is to go into, talk about the high-level increases to the different grant streams that will be used for the committee to be able to allocate the funds, which will then come to council in December.
Okay, so we can do that even though I think Thursday's agenda is to possibly approve the budget, provided that we get through the first three days or two days of budget deliberations. And you're telling me that we could look at including any increases in an overspend or council contingency to support grants, is that?
That's right. So anything, once we see this, and anything that council would want to fund that the committee has not recommended, or not to the level of recommendation or so on, those adjustments could be made at that December meeting, either using council contingency and overspend or different types of mechanism as well, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, and I appreciate the clarification. I did have one other question, and councillor Bourgeois touched on it, the rent cap that is out in the media right now. I believe earlier this year, we had a developer or a, not really a developer, an investor in Moncton. Bill Hennessy, I do believe, came to council, made a presentation with regards to the tax structure and a possible rate cap at that time, if my memory serves me correct. Have we done anything more as far as city staff goes or council goes with following up on that presentation and seeing, now that we're into this situation, the possibilities of what could happen for the City of Moncton?
Thank you, your worship, to councillor Crossman. So, yes, so one of the things, and again, some of it are under our controls, others it's not, right? The rent cap, we have no control over that. The, the benefits or the outcomes of the rent cap are, are, we will see what happens, right? Will it slow development, will it increase development, will it help? We don't know yet, right? Those are things, and even the details of the rent cap, like I would not have enough details to be able to comment. The one thing, the one thing that, that I could see for that presentation is we actually used a lot of that data when presenting to council at the committee of the whole meeting in August, right? I think that data formed a portion or formed was a key consideration in the direction that council gave staff to prepare the budget. So I think from what is in city council control, I think the group that presented would certainly be happy with what will be in the budget here because it will help the cases that they are trying to make. But it's always important to remember as well, there's a lot of components that were presented there that were more directed towards the province as well.
Right, and I agree with that. And tomorrow or sometime during this week, I assume, and I've always seen it in the past budgets, where you break down exactly the city's investment, eight percent, it used to be eight cents on an investment in, you know, what the province was at fifty-one, we'll say, and so on and so forth. We will be going over that over the next two days as well, so that people understand the exact spend that the city of Moncton has, because when you look at it from eight to ten cents, it's a huge spend.
Yeah, so it, this year, actually, it is not part of the budget binder or so on. But the case is still, it's still the same. And municipalities receive approximately eight percent of all tax dollars gener, of all tax dollars generated. And we provide a lot of services with that eight percent.
Yeah, that's why I miss it from the binder. I really think that that should be there for the eight cents that we had, because we used to have a little mail out, right? A little door knocker that went around and told everybody we were responsible for fire, you know, police, garbage pickup, snow removal, so on and so forth. And I really think that's an impact to the envi, to the, not only the environment, but the community as well. So people understand, right?
Yeah, no, and that's something as well, I think, and those door knockers, last year we prepared it as well. They are more in virtual, it's kind of more of a virtual document now. But I think after the budget is approved by council, those are certainly things that we can work with communications on. Because they are, they are good information for our residents and, and commercial properties to have.
I agree with you, thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Butler.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks, Jacques. Again, the budget was done great, you're able to figure a few things out. Just a few things that I'll be asking tomorrow, and so maybe if your, your staff is looking at it. So we're going to, in the budget, we're going out from twenty-five to twenty-nine projection wise. And in that, there's still nothing in regards to, and I brought it up in the other meeting about Trans-Aqua, where even if we can just speak about what our, our ideas are or where we're going with that, because something's got to be talked about, you just can't go away. The number one, the second one is, is that when I was looking through the budget over the weekend and there's nothing for your staff, is that we usually give a hundred and thirty thousand, roughly a hundred and forty-seven thousand, I think it was, for Lyon senior citizens for their programming. And so where they're not doing their programming, last year, the Legion and another community, I forget which one it was, both of them came and we gave money to both, but there's nothing in the budget regards to that. So is there something that we can like divide that? The money is there, but it, the Lyon senior citizens is not, is not for seniors right now. So they're still doing the same work as they did last year, the Legion. And I forget what the other, I apologize, the other one, but there was two. So I would like to see that switched up. Next year in twenty twenty-five, sometime during the year, the new police building is going to open. I would like to see someplace in the budget what we, we're projecting as the final cost of that. So, you know, we're talking about hiring more police officers, but our budget is really, really going to take a kick there next year. I realize that we're taking some out of the reserves to help pay that down, but still the residents, now they're, they're able to go on YouTube to watch this. They should have an idea of what that costs. The one other one, I'll just check these off here. Oh, yes, so when, when we talk, there, there's one part in there that also, if you can just make sure that we, that we come to terms with, we're talking about changing the, the community safety officers over to full-time community officers for the city, the city. I would, I would agree with that, but not until, because we got caught last time when we hired these people and their, their powers are exactly the same. We hired them when we were told last time that they were going to open the Police Act and give them more powers. So we're paying people thirty dollars an hour or whatever, you know, and I appreciate the work they do, don't get me wrong. But I wouldn't want to bring these people on if the Police Act is not being opened up. And if they're not going to have any more authority than what they have now, I just don't see the reasoning behind that. So them are the, them are my questions for tomorrow, just so you'll be able to, especially the Legion and the other one. I'd really like to see where, how we can break that up. Thank you, your worship.
Terrific, councillor Legere.
Yeah, thank you. As much as I appreciate the explanation and it is true that approximately eight cents of all the taxes collected are what the municipality works on. It, it is true, though, that a hundred percent of the property tax comes to the city of Moncton. And, and so for years, you know, although, although it's a small, like, I guess what I'm getting at is when people yell at us and they're, and that the property tax has gone up, it's based on the assessment and that, but that money comes directly into the city of Moncton, does it not?
Thank you, your worship, to councillor Legere. So, yes, so that eight cents on the dollar, that statement means that citizen A, they pay different types of taxes. They pay property taxes, they pay income taxes, they will pay HST when they purchase items or so on. So in a year, let's say someone pays, I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars in, in taxes. That includes everything. That individual, if, if you take the average of across the different streams, because some pay a lot more taxes, others pay barely not a lot of taxes. But overall, that individual, if he, if that he pays twenty-five thousand dollars in, in taxes per year, which includes income tax, HST, property tax, there's debt tax, you can, there's capital gains, there's all types of taxes. The property tax represent around eight, eight cents on the dollar. So eight percent of the taxes that an individual pays in New Brunswick goes towards a municipal, the municipal budgets. The rest, the eighty, the ninety-two percent, or the ninety-two percent goes to the federal government and the provincial government. So that's what that statement means.
And I think because you see it and because it comes in as a lump sum, then obviously, you know, people, I think we could do a better job just sort of explain for that property tax bill, what the breakdown is in terms of delivery services, just for that property tax bill.
And we do that.
Yeah, and so that's really important because otherwise it gets mixed up with everything. But at the end of the day, we, we, that is our only, just about our only revenue in order to deliver the services that we deliver for citizens of Moncton, is it not?
For us, it's around eighty-five percent of our revenues.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councillor Richard.
Merci, madame Lemaire. Thank you, your worship, thank you, Jacques, and thank you to all the teams that contributed to producing a five hundred and seventeen-page document and who worked over the weekend for that.
Or reserve. There'd be a way for us to get a breakdown of what we've spent on from that reserve, either emailed to council or there'd be a question from, that I'll be bringing up tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that we can easily do is we can take the, the council contingencies over the years and indicate what has been allocated out of that contingency. The spend is a different thing because the spend doesn't necessarily occur at the same time as the allocation. For example, the, I believe it was the Visionlands or the Visionland study that came out of the council contingency, a part of it. There's not been a lot of spend on that now. So for us, let's say we had a hundred and, or two hundred and fifty thousand allocated for that. There may be only eighteen thousand spent as of now, I'm just using that as an example. But we can certainly provide you very easily what has been allocated out of those funds as of now, because we track every item that comes to council and which is approved.
So you said easily, tomorrow we'd be able to have that?
Yeah, we can send that by the end of the day.
Is there anyone who has a question and has not spoken yet? I will go to you, back to you councillor Bourgeois.
Councillor Bourgeois, I don't know who I should direct my question to, but I'll put it out there. About a year and a few months ago, council passed a resolution in order to explore the municipal system governance improvements. That was about over a year ago. So a certain number of measures were provided for in this resolution that require action in twenty twenty-five. And I feel a little bit cornered because I don't know what measures, what actions were recommended by the committee. So if the committee is satisfied with the state of democracy in the city, but if we want to act on improving democracy and governance in our city, I haven't seen a budget for that. I haven't seen anything in the budget to that effect. So what are we intending to do? Thank you councillor Bourgeois. I think Nick has an update on that issue.
Yes, so Shelley's been, been working on that update and we, we, we plan to bring that to council in December, actually. We'll have an update on all those action items.
So if there are measures that cost money, should we have some sort of contingency in this budget? So that in twenty twenty-five, it's covered?
I'm not sure, Shelley, if you have an idea, there's, if there's anything that really would require additional resources than what we already have.
One of them was a survey amongst citizens to find out why they vote and those who don't, why they don't. So somebody's got to pay for a survey.
Yes, Shelley.
That would be done through our Let's Chat, which is a free platform.
Well, how would Let's Chat know who doesn't vote? And we're just asking people to volunteer rather than proactively, I mean, this is a debate that we should be having, but you know, Let's Chat to me is not an adequate survey method. So, and I don't want to get into it, but I'm raising it at budget time because if there are things that we want to do that cost money, where does it come from?
I can take a crack at it too, just to, so in terms of this, I think one of the things, when we go through the deliberations, it's kind of, so we'll take note of that. Because I think the other thing as well, in, in terms of the different items such as a survey or so on, some of it already exists in our existing budgets as well, right? I, like, I don't know what the cost to do such a survey would be. Some surveys are really scientific and they're, they're done by more professional. In other instances, you can do surveys that are not very costly, right? There are surveys on Facebooks, I don't, I don't think they cost anything. So, so what we can do with that, I think we can certainly look at the existing budgets of, of what we have in the city and have a conversation if we need more funds. And if we need more funds, I, I don't know what the scale of it would be. And the other options for approving the, those ad hoc things as known as well is, it's, it's, that's where the council contingency is a very useful tool. Twenty thousand dollars in, you know, we have a million set every year for that. We still have remaining funds from twenty twenty-four. So that's also another area that we can quickly address if there's a need. The other one as well is council has the ultimate authority on these things. So even in a year where we don't have budget, council is able to approve an overspend at any time as well.
And thank you, so we'll, to be continued. But it would be symbolically important to have a line somewhere in our budget where we would have, even if it's a twenty-five thousand dollars a year contingency, where we are dedicated to improving democracy somehow. Maybe one year we won't be spending anything because there's nothing to do. But maybe in others, it's, it's sort of like it forces us at least once a year at budget time to say, all right, how much are we committed to democracy and at what value? I don't know.
I have no clue how much it costs to carry out a survey. But there's, there's also the redrafting of district boundaries. So we need a scientific approach to that. We need to have like five different scenarios and it's not going to cost, it's gonna, not going to cost nothing. It's going to cost probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm just putting it out there. So I don't know what to say because the committee hasn't been able to feed us anything in that respect over the past year. So I don't want to spend twenty twenty-five without doing anything in relation to this aspect. So in terms of the procedure, I wanted to know what we could do to put it in the budget, maybe under community business, communications, I don't know, I'm, I'm turning to you. Well, it can be a combination. The best way to approach this, whatever the way we approach this, we really want to flag it in the document, in the budget. To make sure this is funded if needed. If not, well, we can find alternative solutions. Thank you very much. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, thank you councillor Richard. See you all here tomorrow at ten AM sharp.